Welcome to the Monday, September ninth, City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Foyce?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
All right, thank you. Right now, I'm going to ask that you join me in a moment of silence, and after that moment of silence, we will be led in the pledge by Kent Shankle, Director of Cultural and Arts Commission. All right, thank you.
Please join me in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented and the minutes of the September third, two thousand nineteen, regular session.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you. We now have a proclamation for Hunger Action Month. And could, would Barb Prater join me? All right, the City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and in the city of Waterloo, and whereas the city of Waterloo is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our state and to provide additional resources that citizens of Waterloo need, and whereas the city of Waterloo is committed to working with the Northeast Iowa Foundation Bank, Food Bank, the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. Whew, I'm out of breath. And whereas nearly eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty individuals in the Blackhawk County rely on food provided by the Northeast Iowa Food Bank and member agencies annually, and whereas the Northeast Iowa Food Bank distributed more than six point nine million meals of food to member agencies, programs, and food banks in our region last year, and whereas food banks across the country, including the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in their local community. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor, do hereby recognize September as Hunger Action Month. So Barb, thank you for being with us. Can you talk about this?
Sure. On behalf of the food bank, thank you to you and thank you to everybody in the city of Waterloo and Blackhawk County who help support the food bank. There's many faces in this room that do so because, and we can't do what we do without community support. September, for a number of years, has been Hunger Action Month, and it could be as simple as reading an article on hunger or as participating in one of the events that there is to participate in. But our goal is to ensure that everybody who needs food has access to it, and we do that by garnering community support. And on behalf of the food bank, thank you for the support that the city gives us, but as well as everybody else.
I want to just say, you know, thank you Barb and all of your staff as well. And I think what's important to mention in there, not that that acronym doesn't spell ham, is the fact that it's Hunger Action Month. So we're not just talking about helping people that are food insecure and families. We're talking about being involved, being engaged, and seeing what we can do to make sure that everyone has adequate food and nutrition in their houses. So if you have not been engaged, if you have not been involved, please contact Barb at...
The www.northeastiowafoodbank.org or three one nine two three five zero five zero seven.
To see how you can make a difference in helping those that are food insecure in our local community. So bless you and thank you so much for all you're doing.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. It is now time for oral presentations. It's your time to address the City Council on issues not related to the agenda. But I want to say one thing before we start today, and that is, over the past several weeks, I don't say a lot about it, and not just in relation to items we have here. I'm going to ask that when we approach the podium, or when we approach elected officials, that we all have some level of respect with communications. It's been a very tough couple months with the comments and with comments that other folks are receiving. So I'm going to ask that the city of Waterloo stand above the approach that we do in dealing and respecting our elected officials. So I just want to put that out there first into the planet and actually, and then challenge the, our elected officials, because we also need to give the same respect back to all of you as well, whether in this, in here, or outside of here, or emails, or phone calls. So I just want to lay that foundation before we start. So with that said, who would like to address the council first on non-agenda-related items? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Amy Siglin, nineteen oh eight Lorraine Avenue. Here I am again. I'm sure some of you remember me from the parking issues with Enterprise Car Rental and Image Point at the end of Lorraine Avenue and La Porte Road.
Are they back? Yeah.
They've never gone away.
Oh.
We did, let's see, there's a little bit of no parking zone on one side of Lorraine Avenue, the length of the Image Point building, and that did loosen up the congestion down there. I have had two vehicles towed away in the last month. I know that Dan's officers have a lot better things to do than to field calls from Amy saying, hey, there's a car in front of my house, I would like it tagged.
I'm pretty sure they would take their call versus some of the other ones.
Well, I'm sure too, and they've been very sweet when they come out. They've all seen me on the meetings, hi fellas, I'm back again. So now, I think it has, Enterprise has caught wind that I've had to have their customers' cars towed, and now their employees are coming up and parking in front of my house. And they park there in the morning and they're gone by nighttime, which I can't do anything about because they're not staying there for forty-eight hours. What are we gonna do?
All right. So, so what you're seeing now is, it's not the rental cars that are there.
Well, it's both.
It's both?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, and the city has come out and towed a few cars too, right?
Yes, two in the past month.
If I'm not mistaken, and they, those were not the rental cars, were those people that have left their cars and rented?
Correct.
Yeah, because I've had a conversation, it was a while ago, when you first came in, to try to talk to them about that, or see if they can find some parking for folks that are there and leave their cars, because that's what I was hearing.
Right.
There was a lot of issues with that, but I wonder, okay, so, I don't...
I don't want to be that neighbor. I don't want to be that neighbor, but my son parks on the street, you know, he can't even come home from work and park in front of our street because either their employees are parking there, or their customers, on the weekends is when the customers are leaving the cars, and then they'll sit, you know, until Tuesday, Wednesday, then I call down, have them come out and tag it, and then by Friday, they're coming back out to tow the car.
Right.
I've got better things to do with my time, I just would like some resolution. It was a year ago that I was here last time.
Yeah, I remember. I'd, I'd even gone over myself and tried to figure out, because there's also a couple businesses in the general area with about twenty, twenty-five parking spaces that, you know, if someone needed to leave their car, maybe they should have worked out some type of compromise with that particular business that's, what, a half a block away? And the parking lot is rarely full.
Right.
So, yeah, I, well, I don't...
That's, excuse me, that's another issue, is that Image Point now has added on a big addition to the end of their building, to the other end of their building, eating up about a third of their parking. So now, even more of their employees are also parking up the street.
Okay, so it's both businesses?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. All right, Chief, we'll probably have to sit and talk about it and see. But there are alternatives in that area where they could potentially negotiate something with, with some other business owners. So I'll talk to the chief about it and see what we can do, but don't hesitate to call.
Oh, I don't.
Okay.
I don't. The people down at dispatch are getting real used to me.
And you called the non-emergency number, right?
I do, I do.
Okay. The nine-one-one is money.
And, yeah, it's not come to that yet, Dan, but, and what's really funny about the employees parking in front of my house is that there will be four or five empty spots. So they are purposely coming up and parking in front of my house. They know me, I've gone down there and let my piece be known. So they are parking deliberately in front of my house, and then they'll walk all the way down.
All right, all right, we'll take a look at it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda-related items?
Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch. Hi, Mayor, hi, Council. I'm back on the recycling thing again. I talked to one of the department heads the other day for about a half an hour, and I had a suggestion, and I don't know if it's worth anything, that we set up a transfer station and have it open like from eight to eight. I think I mentioned a guy's name we could hire last week, but he don't want the job, so, but, anyway, you know, that way we would have somebody watching it, wouldn't have to sort it, and I thought it was a good idea, and we got buildings around sitting empty that we probably could put bins in.
So, so if we move to do some type of recycling transfer station-ish, you'd be a vocal advocate for spending the dollars for one?
Well, you know, we're spending local dollars to pick up mattresses and...
Right.
TVs and whatever anybody wants to dump now. And I think they even go out on Hammond Avenue and probably throw stuff in the ditches out there, you know? And the other thing I had, it was the lady that got up and said that she could not even afford a five-dollar raise. Now are they going to give the lady like that a break that she can't afford it? And people on fixed income, there's some people out there that are hard up, you know, Mayor, and they just can't, they can't take any more raises.
Right, okay.
Yep, so...
All right, thank you, sir.
That was just a suggestion I had about the transfer station, so...
All right, all right.
I mean, it was, you know, open like eight to eight or something like that.
Well, if we do it, we're gonna have to spend some money, so we won't further guarantee, but I think it'll be a, a great, great thing for the city if we were able to.
I think we're spending money anyway, Mayor, so...
Yeah, we are, we are. We are, thank you, good sir. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda-related items?
Reverend Edward Loggins III, two thirty-three Oliver Street, Waterloo. Most of the week I've been, weekend, I've been trying to figure out exactly how I wanted to approach the mayor and the council. Mayor, I appreciate you giving me a chance to vent a little in my counseling. I'm quite sure that a lot of people live in some nice, quiet neighborhoods. Unfortunately, I live in a not-so-quiet neighborhood. do to enforce that? How is that enforced, especially sometimes during the day? And what I'm saying is that when I'm in my house, I hear cars and SUVs that come by, and they literally, literally shake the house itself. To me, that's absolutely ridiculous, that that should be happening in a neighborhood. And then, we had a couple of fights in our neighborhood, young people. I called the police, and I, and I think they came out because it was at night, and I'm always trying to figure out where are these young people coming from, because they don't live in our neighborhood. But they don't have a problem with coming and fighting in the neighborhood. One fight occurred right at the Speedy Mart store, right on the corner, and nobody called, except for me. Nobody called. So that's, you know, that's, I'm just, just trying to figure out how that works with these things, especially the noise, noise ordinance. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Loggins. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address, yes, sir?
My name is Pat Hayes, twenty-one sixty-six Independence Avenue. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm here today to talk about the Maywood neighborhood Bishop Avenue, Independence Avenue Safety Initiative, which I sent an email to Mr. Amos about, I would like to thank Mr. Amos, and you, Mr. Mayor, for personally responding about this problem. But we have a serious problem in our neighborhood with not only non-resident speeders and some resident speeders, but old signing, misplaced traffic signs, northeast industrial site trucks speeding through a truck embargoed residential neighborhood, and yes, even the Met bus speeding through our neighborhoods. Recently, our neighbors have asked about the train blocking the railroad tracks at Osage Road and Dubuque Road, like at East Fourth Street, it sits and blocks the intersection for long periods of time. Neighbors are fed up with the speeders on Milwaukee and Dearborn dropping their children off at the Old Maywood School Head Start. Another family worries about their ninety-five, ninety-four-year-old mother that likes to sit outside, wave to people going by on Bishop, but has health issues and worries about her going to the street. We have a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, and people pass the good people going that speed, which, which does, does it take, what does it take to get a no passing zone on Bishop Avenue? What does it take to get double yellow lines on Bishop Avenue? What does it take to get some flashing speed limit signs on Bishop Avenue? Milwaukee, Dearborn, maybe speed humps. What does it take to get some misplaced signs in the area put in the right place? This is my first trip here, it won't be my last. We have Independence Avenue to deal with next. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Chief, I think you got some locations, and then Sandy, have you talked to Mr. Hayes already? Have you had a conversation? So Mr. Hayes, you, can we, you get the contact information of Sandy, so we can contact and take a look. So thank you. All right, who else would like to address the council going a second time?
Make a motion to close hearing, receive comments, and place on file.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The presentation's closed.
Okay, make a motion to receive the consent agenda, place on file with, hold on. Where is the dollar? I don't have the... Here it is, sorry. Make a motion to receive the consent agenda, place it on file with the addition of the dollar amount for bill's payment, one A one, in the amount of one million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. If we can keep that every week, we'd be all right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, although I would just like to mention real briefly, on item one B two, or one B four, I believe it is, the Water Works operating budget, I would just suggest all council members take a review of that when they have a chance. We've got a new manager there, and they're looking to do some innovative things as far as manpower and that kind of thing, that I think trend real well for that organization.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Let me see, there's no... All right, someone take number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, Young Arena Roof Replacement Project Contract Number nine-nine-eight.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on a roof replacement going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed. Madam Clerk?
All right, our estimate was a hundred and two thousand dollars. I will read our base bid. There's numerous alternates with this bid. We received one bid, it was from Don Gardner Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
That's a little different. Paul, do you know what was...
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Well, obviously, this is nearly double what the estimate, so you'll see further down the agenda, I'm recommending that we reject the one bid. We're planning on going back to the architect, review the specs, and rebid. Something's not right, obviously, to have that, and we only had one bid as well, which kind of makes us wonder if there was something that needs to be examined, changed, whatever. So we can't afford this, so that's my recommendation at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to, excuse me, adopt a resolution approving the recommendation of the Leisure Services Director to reject the bid of Don Gardner Construction of Waterloo, Iowa totaling one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars due to the bid amount exceeding the project budget.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, although I would just like to mention real briefly, on item one B two, or one B four, I believe it is, the Water Works operating budget, I would just suggest all council members take a review of that when they have a chance. We've got a new manager there, and they're looking to do some innovative things as far as manpower and that kind of thing, that I think trend real well for that organization.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Let me see, there's no... All right, someone take number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, Young Arena Roof Replacement Project Contract Number nine-nine-eight.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on a roof replacement going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is closed. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
All right, our estimate was a hundred and two thousand dollars. I will read our base bid. There's numerous alternates with this bid. We received one bid, it was from Don Gardner Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
That's a little different. Paul, do you know what was...
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Well, obviously, this is nearly double what the estimate, so you'll see further down the agenda, I'm recommending that we reject the one bid. We're planning on going back to the architect, review the specs, and rebid. Something's not right, obviously, to have that, and we only had one bid as well, which kind of makes us wonder if there was something that needs to be examined, changed, whatever. So we can't afford this, so that's my recommendation at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to, excuse me, adopt a resolution approving the recommendation of the Leisure Services Director to reject the bid of Don Gardner Construction of Waterloo, Iowa totaling one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars due to the bid amount exceeding the project budget.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, instruct city clerk to read bids, and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on a roof replacement going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
All right, our estimate was a hundred and two thousand dollars. I will read our base bid. There's numerous alternates with this bid. We received one bid, it was from Don Gardner Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
That's a little different. Paul, do you know what was...
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Well, obviously, this is nearly double what the estimate, so you'll see further down the agenda, I'm recommending that we reject the one bid. We're planning on going back to the architect, review the specs, and rebid. Something's not right, obviously, to have that, and we only had one bid as well, which kind of makes us wonder if there was something that needs to be examined, changed, whatever. So we can't afford this, so that's my recommendation at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to, excuse me, adopt a resolution approving the recommendation of the Leisure Services Director to reject the bid of Don Gardner Construction of Waterloo, Iowa totaling one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars due to the bid amount exceeding the project budget.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
They literally, literally shake the house itself. To me, that's absolutely ridiculous that that should be happening in a neighborhood. And then, we had a couple of fights in our neighborhood, young people. I called the police and I think they came out because it was at night. And I'm always trying to figure out where are these young people coming from because they don't live in our neighborhood. But they don't have a problem with coming and fighting in the neighborhood. One fight occurred right at the Speedy Mart store, right on the corner. And nobody called, except for me. Nobody called. So that's, you know, that's, I'm just, just trying to figure out how that works with these things, especially the noise, noise ordinance. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Loggins. All right, is there anyone else that would like to just, yes, sir?
My name is Pat Hayes, 2166 Independence Avenue. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm here today to talk about the Maywood Neighborhood Bishop Avenue, Independence Avenue Safety Initiative, which I sent an email to Mr. Amos about, I would like to thank Mr. Amos and you, Mr. Mayor, for personally responding about this problem. But we have a serious problem in our neighborhood with not only non-resident speeders and some resident speeders, but old signing, misplaced traffic signs, northeast industrial site trucks speeding through a truck embargoed residential neighborhood, and yes, even the Met bus speeding through our neighborhoods. Recently, our neighbors have asked about the train blocking the railroad tracks at Osage Road and Dubuque Road, like at East Forest Street, it sits and blocks the intersection for long periods of time. Neighbors are fed up with the speeders on Milwaukee and Dearborn dropping their children off at the Old Maywood School Head Start. Another family worries about their 95, 94-year-old mother that likes to sit outside waving to people going by on Bishop, but has health issues and worries about her going to the street. We have a 25 mile an hour speed limit, and people pass the good people going that speed. What's, what does, does it take, what does it take to get a no passing zone on Bishop Avenue? What does it take to get double yellow lines on Bishop Avenue? What does it take to get some flashing speed limit signs on Bishop Avenue? Milwaukee, Dearborn, maybe speed humps. What does it take to get some misplaced signs in the area put in the right place? This is my first trip here, it won't be my last. We have Independence Avenue to deal with next. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Chief, I think you got some locations. And then Sandy, have you talked to Mr. Hayes already? Have you had a conversation? So, Mr. Hayes, you, can we, you get the contact information of Sandy so we can contact and take a look? So, thank you. All right, who else would like to address the council going a second time?
Make a motion to close hearing, receive comments, and place on file.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Is that all in favor?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The presentation's closed.
Okay, make a motion to receive the consent agenda, place on file with, hold on. Where is the dollar? I don't have the. Here it is. Sorry. Make a motion to receive the consent agenda, place it on file with the addition of the dollar amount for bill's payment, 1A1, in the amount of $1,697,697.59.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. If we can keep that every week, we'd be all right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, although I would just like to mention real briefly, on item 1B2, or 1B4, I believe it is, the Water Works operating budget, I would just suggest all council members take a review of that when they have a chance. We've got a new manager there and they're looking to do some innovative things as far as manpower and that kind of thing that I think trend real well for that organization.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Let me see, there's none. All right, someone take number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2019, Young Arena Roof Replacement Project Contract Number 998.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on a roof replacement going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Council, discussion. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing on the fiscal year 2020, Cardinal Drive, Donald Street, Lynnbud Lane, Martin Road Drainage Improvements Contract Number 988.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone? Did I, no? Oh, is there anyone, is there anyone out there that would like to make comments about drainage improvements going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Council, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing on the fiscal year 2020, Cardinal Drive, Donald Street, Lynnbud Lane, Martin Road Drainage Improvements Contract Number 988.
Second.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone? Did I, no?
No.
Oh, is there anyone, is there anyone out there that would like to make comments about drainage improvements going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Council, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and that is for a security guard services waste management services department.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone? Did I, no?
No.
Oh, is there anyone, is there anyone out there that would like to make comments about drainage improvements going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Council, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Six million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars general obligation refunding bonds.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second counsel. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take six, seven, and eight?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce.
Uh, number six is a resolution directing the advertisement for sale of two million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, subject to adjustment per terms of offering general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand nineteen C, and approving electronic bidding procedures in official statement. Number seven is adopting a resolution directing the advertisement for sale of three million, six hundred and forty-five thousand, subject to adjustment per terms of offering taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand nineteen D, and approving electronic bid, bidding procedures, and distribution of preliminary official statement. Number eight is adopting a resolution approving an agreement with BFI Waste Services LLC, DBA Republic Services of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for the City of Waterloo's voluntary curbside recycling program by providing a recycling processing facility for a period of five years and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
All right, thank you. That motion's been made with the second. Questions, anyone?
David Dreyer, thirty-one, forty-five West Forest Street. As I said last week, uh, I don't see anything in this contract that is really favoring the citizens of Waterloo. Um, all elected officials are to be protecting the citizens, and it looks to me like there's no protection in this contract for the citizens of Waterloo. Um, I don't see anywhere in this contract where we have the right to end the contract, but I see in there they do. Uh, I also see that if they don't have a favorable plastic market or whatever market, they can go ahead and dump it in the landfill. That's what we're trying to avoid is putting more in the landfill. Uh, it just, reading, reading this contract just does not look to me like it's in favor of the citizens. It's in favor of Republic. And I don't think that's fair to the citizens with our money that's paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item?
Todd Obadall, one twenty-four Amity Drive. Um, I was surprised to hear last week that, uh, in this contract, that there isn't a requirement that, uh, recyclables are going to get recycled. Um, we are going to get charged for recycling service, but if the market doesn't make it profitable for the contractor to recycle these plastics, they're still going to return to the landfill. I think we should put some language in that requires them to recycle them, or at the very least not to deliver our plastics, which we're paying to not put into our landfill, to not show up in our landfill. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the counsel? Going a second time. Oh, uh, counsel questions? I was in hearing mode. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Did somebody have a question?
Mr. Amos.
Well, yes, I, I, I spoke on, go ahead.
You sure? Okay.
Well, if I could, ask a question, and that would be that, could Randy talk about the issues that were raised? Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. Um, in regards to the recycling of the materials, um, it's the same thing on the collection side. Um, that's why it also goes on to the processing side as well, too. If, if for some reason there is not an outlet forum to be able to get rid of those materials, like I stated before, um, unfortunately, they would hold on to them at, to a certain point, and unfortunately, they have to go to landfill. But as the markets would come back, um, and there is an outlet forum to be able to do that, then, of course, um, the main goal is to recycle as much material as we can. We just have to keep in perspective right now that the market is down, and unfortunately, in some of those areas, there isn't a market. So, um, that's the reason why they are still taking those materials, because when the market does come back, you know, of course, they want to be able to recycle those.
And Mr. Mayor, uh, the issue was brought up about the opt-out clause.
And the opt-out clause, um, you know, under, um, extenuating circumstances, but for the most part, um, we're not really into this to, to opt out. I mean, our goal is to recycle, and same thing with the collection side. Um, we got to have one without, you can't have one without the other, so, um, they run hand to hand. Thank you.
All right, wherever we were at.
I'll start over. Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Nine, ten, and eleven.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Number nine is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by Myron Construction Company, Inc. of Nina, Wisconsin, in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars, in conjunction with the fiscal year two thousand twenty digester number three, lid removal contract number nine-eight-two, and receive and file a two-year maintenance bond. Number ten is a motion approving final quantity summary for a net increase of seventy-four thousand, sixty-four dollars and eleven cents, in conjunction with the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, bridge repairs Dubuque Road over Blowers Creek and Green Hill Road over Trolley Car Trail. Contract number nine-five-nine unauthorized the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number eleven is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by Boulder Contracting LLC of Grundy Center, Iowa, in the amount of four hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and eleven cents, in conjunction with the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, bridge repairs Dubuque Road over Blowers Creek and Green Hill Road over Trolley Car Trail. Contract number nine-five-nine, and receive and file a two-year maintenance bond.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to speak to these items on the agenda? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Anybody? Mr. Schmidt.
Twelve is adopting a resolution approving supplemental agreement number one to the professional services agreement with H.R. Green, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, originally approved on June third, two thousand nineteen, in an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars, in conjunction with the Shawless Road corridor and Sink Creek drainage study, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Item thirteen is adopting a resolution approving a permanent easement agreement with Grant D. and Denise A. Shuldrough in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents to allow for the construction and future maintenance of a storm sewer located directly northeast of twenty forty-seven Cardinal Drive, and authorizes the Marin City Clerk to execute said document. And item number fourteen is adopting a resolution approving a permanent easement agreement with Mary E. Strasburg in the amount of five hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents to allow for the construction and future maintenance of a storm sewer located at twenty forty-seven Cardinal Drive, and authorizes the Marin City Clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, questions about these three items, anyone? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, number fifteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, and ordinance amending the two thousand eight traffic code by rescinding subsection forty-seven, University Avenue access north to section five-four-five, yield streets by deleting subsection forty-seven in its entirety and inserting in lieu thereof a new subsection forty-seven, University Avenue access north to section five-four-five of the two thousand eight traffic code.
Second.
All right. That motion's been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to comment on University Avenue? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Sandy, do you have any comments on this? Or is this safety, or do we need to do this for the project, or?
Sandy Greco, Traffic Operations Director. Um, this is, if you can picture Casey's and where Perkins is, um, where traffic comes out, we have access road, it's access A now, as it's been named from University Avenue as the project continues. Um, traffic comes from both ways and does not stop for people coming off of university. So this is just a safety issue, having them yield and look before they proceed.
So we need to probably get on this?
If we could get it through, that would be great.
And then, does that access way have to be named, that? Can we come up with a name later? Councilway?
It's, we, we already have an, we already have an access A and an access B with the new University Avenue project.
Well, council goes one way, mayor goes the same way.
Got a lot of arrows.
We could put that on a sign.
All right, thank you. Uh, so we have a motion to suspend the rules, and, uh, we have some troubles there we need to address. So, madam clerk?
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, consider and pass for the second and third times, and adopt a said ordinance.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Um, madam clerk?
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, before we read sixteen, I need to go to the bathroom.
Motion to recess for a bathroom break.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
All right. Motion been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I have a straightforward blunt manner. And sometimes people take that as being disrespectful.
But you've never called me out my name, and I haven't heard you call any other council member. I'm talking about the...
So we good?
Always.
Okay, thank you. I don't think I'm gonna need an entire five minutes to speak on this.
But we need your name and your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I said my name.
Nope, I did.
Oh. All right, Don Cher, University Avenue Dairy Queen, University Avenue Waterloo, Iowa. The only reason I am opposed to this is because of the confusing nature, as far as in my opinion, of the way it's written. I've stated that in the past, I've hired people with criminal backgrounds, and I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with the uncertainty of a pending lawsuit, or the uncertainty of through some snafu or loophole that I'm forced to hire somebody that I feel could potentially harm my business or hurt one of my customers. Companies with money, they can get around this. They use a staffing agency, and that's something I can't afford to do. The big companies, they just have to go to another town where they have another store and take their applications there. So I'm gonna ask that you consider tableing this and rewriting it a little bit clearer and get rid of the confusion, the ambiguity. And if you'll do that, I don't have any problems with this at all. Now, there are a couple other things that we can do to help people with criminal backgrounds. Iowa Workforce Development has a program where you can go take aptitude tests. I don't know if they do this in high schools anymore. They did when I went to high school. You go in and you take an aptitude test. You pass the aptitude test, and you get a certificate that says that you're job-ready to be trained, or maybe even go ahead and do the job. There are also tax credits available for people that hire persons with criminal backgrounds. I don't take part of that, though. I feel if somebody's worth hiring, I'm willing to pay them. I don't need the government to pay them for me. But that is an option for other businesses that look at the bottom line only. So if there's anything that I can do personally to help with any research or finding anything out, I'm more than willing to lend a hand. You guys have always been open and returning my calls or listening to my concerns. So like I said, if you'll table this and rewrite it, I don't have any opposition at all. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Eric Donat. Donat? Do Not.
Do not mispronounce his name.
Thank you. Okay, Eric Do Not, 610 East Forest Street, Waterloo, Iowa. I just wanted to also speak on the Fair Chance Initiative that's being considered right now. And I spoke two weeks ago and talked to the council about how the council gave me a second chance, and they looked past my disability. And I'm just asking the council to give people with problems and issues that they've overcome in their life to look beyond their issues. And other people deserve a second chance that I was given. So let us remember that the correctional system is for correcting and rehabilitation of people. And giving a second chance is part of all of that and a part of what we're talking about tonight. Like I said, for me, when I look at the Fair Chance Initiative, it means giving those who have paid their debt to society after they've returned... After they've returned to society, it means giving them a second chance as I was given a second chance. And that's what they need too. Just what I was given is what these folks are asking for, asking for a second chance. And I don't see what the problem is with allowing people a chance. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Do Not.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I'd like to call up Al Manning. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Al Manning, Sub City, 3045 Kimball Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa. I just have a few comments about this proposed ordinance. Like Don, I also believe in giving people second chances. I've knowingly hired felons and people with other criminal backgrounds. I don't have a problem with that. But I guess what I have a problem with is the city compelling businesses to change their hiring practices. I think, as Don mentioned, there are programs out there that offer incentives for hiring people with a criminal past. And I think that is the route that should be taken, is giving a positive incentive rather than negative consequences when considering someone with that kind of a background. And assuming that this ordinance wouldn't be a violation of Iowa code, which I think it clearly would be, is it really even necessary? Or is this just a solution in search of a problem? I mean, we have, right now, probably the lowest unemployment rate in history or close to the lowest unemployment rate. Businesses are begging for employees. I don't know, and I'm sure there are some exceptions, but I don't know too many businesses who are going to pass over an otherwise qualified employee on the basis of a past criminal record, unless it was something very serious. But it's just not, I don't see that there is a need for this at this time. Like I said, you can go up and down the street, and all the restaurants and retail establishments have help-wanted signs in their windows. You can drive around town, and other businesses, and some of them have permanent now-hiring signs on their property. I mean, almost everybody is short-staffed and needs employees. You know, when I'm looking at an application, the first thing I look at is not their... if they have a criminal background. The first thing I look at is their work history. If they've had four jobs in the past year, I'm probably not gonna be interested in them. The next thing I look at is their availability. Do the hours that they're available fit the hours that I need somebody to work? And do I have the number of hours that they want? I always ask, you know, like, what are the minimum number of hours? And what are the maximum number of hours that you're able to work? And then, if they match in those two areas, which probably 80% of them don't, then I would maybe look at a criminal history. But that would not disqualify them on the base of that. Like I said, that's not what I look at primarily, and it's not the first thing that I look at. I guess, you know, a couple of things that just bother me about this is... Number one, I think, again, it's kind of overreach on the part of the city to try to micromanage the hiring process of businesses. But basically, you would be giving rights to people with criminal backgrounds at the expense of businesses, employers. You would be taking their right away to employ the hiring practice that they think is necessary for the profitable functioning of their business as well as the safety of their customers and their other employees. So you're giving a right to somebody, one group, taken away from another group. In a sense, you'd be creating a protected class. And that protected class would be those with criminal backgrounds. And again, I do believe in second chances. But I think those kind of decisions should be at the discretion of the employer. I don't feel like the employer should have to justify or be called before a board or commission to explain why they didn't hire a certain individual. Again, I think just reading the Iowa code, it's pretty clear to me. And I don't think you need a law degree. It's pretty clear that changing hiring practice of a business is in violation of the Iowa code as it is written. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, we have Linda Miller.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
My name is Linda Miller. Sorry, I always have that problem. 4001 North 10th Street, Marion, Iowa. I disagree with what you're trying to do here. I have a problem with the word "any" at the very beginning of all this stuff. And unreasonable risk and substantial... I mean, what's unreasonable to one person might be reasonable to another. It's just very general, the way this stuff is worded. But even the state of Iowa has gotten rid or is about to get rid of background checks based on the birthdate. You can't go and find the birthdate of somebody, of a criminal, or something that damaged your property anymore. And places that do background checks, they're having trouble getting that data now. And I think that should be available. And I just believe that when you can't find stuff on IowaCourts Online because of a birthdate, that there's a problem there. And this is just continuing this. I believe that we are creating a protected class with that and with what you're trying to do. I believe people, felons, need jobs. I believe they should have jobs. I've dated felons for up to three years at different times, and I've had no problems with them. And I'm a landlord and a small business owner. And so I've kind of seen what can happen in different areas. And I think what Iowa needs to do, and a person that spoke at one of your previous meetings said that they thought it should be a statewide thing. And I think that's a good idea. Because the state needs to get in there and clean up felonies, like somebody who got arrested for a nickel bag of pot 15 years ago. I mean, and they have a felony for it. That should not be. That needs to be cleaned up. And you guys, with this, what you're trying to do is a good starting point to get this ball rolling, to contact other cities and get them on the same page with you guys. And then it can become Iowa-wide. And I just think that's what needs to be done. Thank you. I don't think I would vote for this right now, the way it stands.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make comments?
Pastor Mary Robinson, All Nations Community Church, 321 Normandy Street, here in Waterloo. I'm sorry I did not call in, so I'm gonna lose two minutes. So I'm gonna talk really fast to try to get everything in. I read an article from July of this year that said that conservative estimates indicate that roughly 70 million people in the United States have some sort of criminal record. And nearly 700,000 people return to their communities from incarceration every single year. Numerous research studies find that people require a combination of family support, community assistance, and economic opportunity to stay out of the criminal justice system. And so having access to employment opportunities is an absolute critical component of this web of support. We are systems here. And what happens in one system absolutely impacts what happens in another system. Unfortunately, finding a job is all too difficult for many people. In fact, most people who have served time. We are causing these people who have served their time to serve an additional sentence, just because we do not want to give them a chance. It's interesting to me that 35 states and DC, including 150 cities, have a fair chance initiative or fair chance laws. In addition to that, 13 states and 18 cities have extended it to private employers. Now, what this means for us in Iowa is that every single state that borders Iowa has fair chance initiatives, every single state. And so that means that I can understand why many times we lose good people who can work our jobs, because all they have to do is cross any state line anywhere. Every single one, you can name one. And I mean, every one, and they have them. And so while having a job, especially a low-wage job, is not a guarantee that somebody will remain out of the criminal justice system, it surely can help. And unemployment strains critical family supports and provides financial incentives to engage, let's be real, in other activity, and many times, it may be illegal. And so removing a barrier that cuts off employment opportunities before the hiring process even begins, I just have a real issue with that. And... Okay, I have to go. And I just want to remind you that Dr. King says, "Whatever affects one indirectly affects us all." And so I encourage you, please, mayor and council, to pass this initiative. If 35 other states and 150 cities could figure it out, I think we can too.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Carrie Darrow with Grove Cedar Valley. And I was before you a couple months ago with our position on this initiative. And while we fundamentally support removing the checkbox and removing the box on the front of the application, our preference would be, as was indicated by Mary, and when you said someone mentioned that it should be statewide, that someone was me a couple months ago. And we really do, as an organization representing businesses, believe that this will be much more effective if handled at the state level, statewide across the entire state. I have appointments with four of our legislators in the next couple of weeks to bring this up with them. I know it's not gonna happen quickly. But we do also have a governor that's interested in justice reform, and I know all of us here do too. So I just wanted you to know, our preference is that it is handled statewide. But given that, if the city of Waterloo chooses to move forward and re-adress this issue and look at some of the wording, we would really be glad to be at the table, along with our friends at Iowa Works. There's just a lot of confusion, I believe, unintentionally. But I believe that we can clear this up and have this be much more comfortable for the business community. But again, we fundamentally support removing the box. It's just the back page of the ordinance as written under discriminatory practices that we'd like to revisit with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Al Hayes. I live in Cedar Falls, but I'm not here as an individual. I'm here representing an organization, the Iowa Justice Action Network. We're a statewide organization of people concerned with criminal justice reform. And we really applaud the courage of members of city council who have agreed to make Waterloo assume a position of leadership on this issue. Of course, as a statewide organization, we'd like to have a statewide law too. But I think, in the meantime, I think it's... Cities can really exert some effective leadership on this. Other people have talked about how a felony conviction may carry a fixed sentence that is determined to be a fair sentence for that particular offense. But in reality, in many ways, a felony conviction can be a life sentence, no matter what the actual crime is. It can be a lifelong denial of opportunity to get jobs, to get education, to live in certain places. And we believe that it should not be a life sentence, that people should have the opportunity to turn their lives around and be productive members of the community. I think everybody, regardless of your political orientation, your political party, whatever, I think we all agree that public safety is important. We want our communities to be safe. And one of the ways to enhance public safety is to reduce recidivism. If someone commits a crime and harms someone, you can't really undo that exactly. But what you can do is prevent that individual or other individuals from... or not prevent, but at least discourage, or do everything you can to discourage those individuals from committing another crime. That enhances safety for everyone in the community. And so, and in order to reduce recidivism, we need to have successful reintegration. And as many other speakers have said, the successful reintegration is often a key element of that is employment. And so if you can... If a person can be successful in employment, it's much more likely that they can get back on the right path and not reoffend. I think this ordinance does not prevent employers from not employing someone that they feel is a risk to their business because of something that they've done. It simply encourages them to be more responsible in their hiring, to not reject out of hand because of a past offense someone when that may or may not be relevant. So IGN is very much in support of this initiative. We have members all over the state, including many all over this community, and all communities of Black Hawk County were represented. And so I wanted to make sure that we got on record on this. Also, I would take what a previous speaker said and kind of turn it around a little bit. He mentioned that you can hardly walk into a business anymore in this area without seeing a help-wanted sign in front of it. We seem to have a bit of a labor shortage. Well, I would say that's why, because we have a labor shortage, that's why we shouldn't be arbitrarily excluding or rejecting people because of their criminal record, when they can potentially be a good and productive employee for that business.
Thank you, Dr. Hayes.
So that's the main point I want to make. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes.
Hi, Matthew Gibbon, 231 Lipton Boulevard. Just want to make it short and brief. I've had a... This is a very interesting divisive issue. I've talked to many people this week about it. I work in small business, and I hire lots of people. I've got a couple of success stories I could share with you as well. My number two at my current position committed an arson or had a charge when he was 18. He's in his 40s now. He still fights this situation with his criminal record. When I first moved to Waterloo, I had to check the box, because I was kind of misinformed under what, you know, whether or not I should or not. I'm a father of two, a member on the service commission at my church. I run a small business that dedicates its time to actually bettering this community. And I do take time listening to their community members. The same gentleman that I hired, his brother worked for me. He was living in a tent a year before I hired him. He now has custody of his kids again. He's sober and clean. He works at a really awesome job now that I helped write a recommendation for, where he has benefits. So this is a gentleman that spent 10 years actually in prison because he had an intent to sell and some other things. And he's a white, working-class guy. But he spent years working minimum-wage jobs. I'm not trying to call... This is gonna be a tough decision for everybody. And I hope that... I was looking online today to see how many times Waterloo has addressed this issue. And so if you decide to vote against it then, and all the people that are saying nay against it, then I expect and hope, as community members, that you start rallying for our community as soon as this meeting is over. One gentleman said he doesn't even look at the, you know, some of the stuff. He looks at availability, and he looks at other things. So then he didn't even look at the box. I have worked in bigger cities and in Midwest cities where the box has eliminated certain people. Don't get me wrong, folks. You can hire someone with a criminal record, and you can bite it. What we call in my industry, eating metal. But the success chances that I've had... I have a guy that didn't even tell me until like a month ago that he had previously been locked up for four or five years. And I go, "What did you get locked up for?" He goes, "I was a thief." I go, "Were you good at it?" And he goes, "Obviously not. I was five years in jail." He is one of my everyday 10 minutes early to work guys. He has a roommate who is handicapped that he spends time taking care of. It's not a carpet blanch to hire people with criminal records. I can't walk up and say, "I want Mayor Hart's job, and I've been working on cars for a few weeks." That's on the application. If I haven't worked for seven years and I'm in the interview, I can ask the person, "Hey, look, man, you haven't worked for seven years. What's going on?" "Well, I was on a spiritual journey." Okay? You can find IowaCourts.gov. Yes, there are some issues, and I agree with that. But for the most part, public record is public record. You can find that. So are we, as business people, gonna be lazy? Or are we gonna engage? Because really, it's about the people. So when I talk to people, they want this. When I talk to employers, they don't. So either we need to figure this out right now and vote for it and be progressive and tell people of Waterloo who are marginalized for being human that we want to put you back to work and make you tax contributors and not entitlement or tax, you know, burdens. Or then you start tomorrow, when you deny it, and start doing these aptitude tests, or start pushing for things, or you get on the phone with the senators that I write every day.
Thank you, Mr. Lipton. I'm gonna give everybody about a 10 to 15-second over the three minutes, because the three minutes is a shot. But comments, thank you. So you may get like 10 seconds or 15. But could the next person come on up? All right, there's no more comments?
Hi, I'm Alexis Williams, 1958 Pinehurst Lane. So I just want to say that I totally agree with it, and I understand, like, the whole protection thing. But it truly is a barrier to people who, like, you know, maybe it happened 17 years ago. Why should they have to still suffer after, you know, paying their debt to society? But, you know, I believe that people deserve a second chance. Like, I agree with multiple people that also said the same thing. So, you know, people shouldn't have to suffer because of something that happened. And employers, sometimes they do discriminate based off of backgrounds, you know? Even people that has been wrongly convicted of crimes, like, they're paying for this. You know, they can't take care of their families, so they have to go and work at McDonald's 60, 70, 80 hours a week. And they still don't even have enough money because of being denied, you know? And they can be the most qualified people and still be denied versus somebody who has a clean record, and they don't even know how to do the job. You know what I mean? So, yeah, I just, I agree with it. I have friends that can't get jobs in town simply because of, maybe they made a mistake like a long time ago. So they have no choice but to go out of the city. And I just don't think that's fair, that people should still have to suffer for something that has happened decades ago, a couple years ago. You know, I think everybody deserves a fair shot. And that's just my input on it, so... Yep. Appreciate you guys for listening, and I hope that we do come to a resolution today.
Ms. Williams, this is your first time public speaking?
Yes.
You did an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, next.
My name is Deborah Higginson-Harman. I live at 402 Hope. But I work with Iowa Works here in Black Hawk County. And we are the people that see all the people that you are talking about this evening. We are the ones who deal with the various amount of barriers to employment in this community on a daily basis. There are several, there are a lot of employers who are now... don't even have the question on their application. SHRM, who is a national organization for human resources, have signed a nationwide initiative on banning the box. We need to do something. You're right, our unemployment rate is very low at this time. However, you have employers in this community who know how to get around some issues. And we, for the past two years, have been dealing with issues within... And we, for the past two years, have been dealing with issues with employment here in Black Hawk County. So while ban the box is great, it does, and there may be employers who may be upset, but there are employers who are in agreement and there are employers who will support this. You talk about Iowa Courts Online, that information is always not accurate.
That's right.
And that's where many employers go to, to get their validation on people's records. We have to start educating our friends and our family members that there is a big difference between being arrested and being convicted of something. I'm going to give you a short story. I taught reemployment services classes and I had a young man in there who said, Ms. Deb, you know, I have a felony. And I'm like, what kind of felony do you have? I said, were you convicted of anything? And he was like, no. And I'm like, why would you say you have a felony when you've not been convicted and that, you know, you, we don't, we've not taught ourselves enough about the criminal language to be able to separate the difference. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done in the community regarding this issue. And I'm very glad that we're having this conversation tonight.
Good evening. My name is Anna Weems at 635 Independence Avenue, in case you didn't know it. And I'm glad to be here to talk to you. First of all, I want, I looked and saw the notice where it says, two cities, Waterloo and Cedar Falls, two worst cities in the United States. And you're sitting here thinking about, how can that be? Look at you. We got the largest black population in the state, in the state, but does it reflect in our city? Does it reflect? No. And it's not individual one at all. I train FBI doctors, lawyers, judges, and heads of corporations. I've did it for 50-plus years. Some of you I've trained and some of you I've helped get out of damage. But I've never, I had all the cases against me. I went in through the civil rights movement. I had 19 charges against me. I'm here to see, Mr. McCoy's daughter here to see me and let her see that what he helped me do, drop all those charges. I have been to Harvard University. I went to 27 states. I have trained every NAACP and the national level. I was the first to be hired in Waterloo, Iowa, to get the job. I've done some great things because Mr. McCoy gave me a chance. We don't have the chance to go in that application and say, because you've been in jail. A lot of you, a lot of other people have been in jail. We're just getting out of a riot. We had the worst riot in the United States. We're just getting out of it. We don't, look at the African American community. Look at the police department out there. Look at the drugs out there. Look at the crime. Look at all of, we got some things to do. I want to ask you two, three things. Is this reflection, is good for us in this community? Is this reflection? As I train FBI agents, I ask them one thing they want. Someone said they're afraid of the black community. Let's fight for something. You're better than that. I know all of you. One of your ladies of the human rights was our NAACP at one time. Come on, let's do it. Let's be where we ought to be. Let's show everybody we got together and we can work together. Let's support our Human Rights Commission. He brings a report to you, you're paying him, accept it. If there's problems with it, let's work together on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Todd Oberdahl, 124 Amity Drive. Yes, I'd like to say if there's problems with this, we should work on it. This ordinance was presented as something that was ban the box. Take it off the application and then you can talk about it during the interview process. This is something a whole lot different than that. It says that the employer cannot make any inquiry, direct or indirect, into criminal history until after the job offer has been, until a conditional job offer has been made. That is very different from what some people have been supporting, and I support, and what is actually in the ordinance. Let's fix that. I've spoken to many, many business people over the last two weeks. Not one of them has said that we are adamantly opposed to banning the box or willing to do this, but this other stuff that's in here, that's a problem. It's also a problem in regards to state law. We have to follow state law. If we're pushing for civil rights for people, it's about putting laws into place. And then once we get our laws into place, that other people respect them. And we have to respect the laws that are here already. In this section, 364-3, the preemption, the home rule, so-called section, it talks, it also mentions in section, in part three of this, it goes into that the cities cannot ban the sale of items. When we had the fireworks issue come up, nobody said, you know what? We should just disregard state law and ban the sale of fireworks in the city of Waterloo. That would be a great thing to do. We said, no, we can't do that. The state has tied our hands on this. We can't do that. We must respect state law. The state also says in here that we cannot put additional terms and conditions on hiring practices. To put through this ordinance as written is in violation of state law. And all that's going to happen is that a charge will be brought, it will get thrown out of court, and then the person that got the charge is going to come back and sue the city that they brought, they brought civil rights charges under the city ordinance that's in violation of state code, and the city will be, city will be on the hook to pick up the cost, those court costs, and maybe some punitive damages. This is not something that we need. Let's fix this. Let's do this right. What, it's been brought up about what is in this bill and what is in this ordinance and what is not in the ordinance. I have read this ordinance. Other people have read this ordinance. We see it's in plain language that there are requirements here that are not allowed under state law. We can't control state law. We have to work within it. Let's go back to the drawing board. Let's put this on the table. Let's have everybody come together that agrees on the outcome that we want here. We want people not to get discriminated against just because they have a criminal, they have a criminal conviction in their past. Let them get to the interview. Let them have the chance to sit down and have that one-to-one, eye-to-eye. Let's not have that inquiry happen after that one-to-one and eye-to-eye because somebody's afraid of getting sued. And if that, when that person gets sued, they're going to come back and sue the city to get their money back for the cost of that case and then some. Let's do this right. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joe Gordon, 510 Willshire Avenue in Waterloo. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing this opportunity for people to speak on this important issue. And I speak in favor of the ordinance. I'm a criminology professor, you and I, some of you I know, and you're aware of that. And I've studied and conducted research and taught in the area of criminology for longer than I want to say, I think almost 25 years now. A big part of my work has to do with offender rehabilitation and treatment. And so I'd like to speak about a couple of aspects of this that some people have alluded to, but I want to, and I've also worked as a parole officer, by the way. So I've, I've spent thousands of hours with offenders and their families as they struggle to be reintegrated back into the community. And that is a struggle. It's very difficult in ways that many of us can't even begin to imagine. And so when someone who's trying to be reintegrated back into the community faces a situation where employers are going through a stack of applications, and I respect that some people here might not do this, but I suspect many do, and they go through those applications and they see that box is checked, that's someone who never gets called back in. They never get called back in. And what that does is, in my experience, and I think what the research shows us about offender attitudes, is it contributes dramatically to their frustration and their desperation. And when we have offenders who are in our community not being reintegrated, which is a very strong approach to recidivism, but they're not being reintegrated and they're being excluded and marginalized, or at least they feel that way, now you have someone who's primed to go back to breaking the law, to using drugs, selling drugs, becoming violent, whatever it happens to be. So I see this ordinance as a very positive thing to improve public safety. I tell you from my own experience, and I've talked to some folks over here in our local probation and parole, and I challenged Chief Tralka. I suppose he would have the same experience. I'm not familiar with one instance in which a parolee or a probationer or a person who's been a convicted felon, who has committed a job-related crime on the basis of, you know, being hired as, you know, as an employee and then, you know, did something in that place of employment that caused problems. So I think this is, in some respects, this is much ado about nothing, but what it does provide us is an opportunity to improve public safety. And also, one thing lastly, on fiscal responsibility. Every time that we have an offender who comes out here and they face these barriers and they get pushed back by these barriers and then they recidivate because of that frustration, then what happens? Well, they can't pay their fees and they're rental to the probation department, so that becomes problematic. And Chief Tralka has to sometimes send people out to arrest them, and that becomes more expensive. So I think there's really almost nothing, no good reason for not supporting this ordinance. And I hope that all of you, for purposes of public safety and financial responsibility, will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. From the sounds of it outside, it seems like, I hope you bought a sleeping bag. Somebody ordered some pizza. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak going a second time?
My name is Larry Bedard. I live at 1144 Linder Drive in Waterloo, Iowa. I got a little experience too. I got, went to East Waterloo High School, played basketball with John Kincaid, Bob Kincaid, Bill Perkins, and Emmett Housman at the honorary pallbearer at Emmett Housman's funeral. And I can tell you, I think most of them would agree with me. I got a BA in business. I have a master's degree in counseling. I've talked to a lot of students over about 10 years. I got a lot of experience in the private sector business. And I disagree with this ordinance the way it's written up. I've tried to help a lot of people out. I got crapped on a number of times, but I haven't given up yet. In this last meeting, I read the paper and I heard Forrest Dillow, he commented and he voted no. And Bruce Jacobs brought up the rights of the businesses, and I agree with that. Mark Klein brought up the fact that the tendency for convicted criminals to, that the sort of time to reoffend was high, and I agree with that. And Pat Morrissey stated that it was proposed ordinance which merely supported the civil rights. I don't know about that, but me, I want everybody to have human rights. I want the business to have human rights. And I think without that, our community is going to turn into a crap hole without businesses. If we want to attract business in the city of Waterloo, Iowa, we better kind of shape up. They're going to, not going to come in with a lot of crime the way it's going. The police department can't keep up with what's going on now. And I think Chief Trak would probably agree with that. He's busier and everything, you know, so. And that's what I got to say. I could go into further. I, you know what? When I was at Iowa, at Southeastern Community College, I was in the student activities department, and we had the prison reform seminar. The people from the state penitentiary came up and had a panel of inmates. And one student asked, he's what, what, how'd you get in, you know, how'd you get up in prison? He says, well, you know what I did? I went out and I stole a car and went across state lines. Is that the only thing you did? Well, yeah, that's about the only thing I did. So I got up, I said, what else did you do? Tell the truth. Well, it wasn't that. I just stole the car and went across state lines. He shot somebody with a gun. And he went on and on and on. So, sure quote all this stuff, that nobody's, you know, I believe in giving everybody a second chance. I gave a lot of people a second chance in my life and sometimes been crapped on and sometimes been worked out okay, so. But I think we got to, I think it amounts to the state should handle all this stuff. That's what I think. We should just table it and have the state handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment before we? All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me say, like so many of you, I totally support giving everyone a second chance. I think everyone deserves that. I know we've all been given second chances and we need to extend that. And I've heard from so many of you, and I appreciate your input, but through the whole discussion, we've determined that there are a couple of things in the ordinance that do need to be improved or clarified. And so I am, with that said, I'm going to make a motion that we table this for five weeks.
Second. All right, the motion's been made with the second. It's on the floor for the table.
Did I do that wrong?
Well, he, he has the opportunity to talk about the tabling.
Sure.
Well, it's just a point of order that we're not tabling.
I'm sorry, postponing, postponing. I'm sorry. I'd like to postpone this for five weeks.
Second amendment, you good?
Yes, sir.
I just put it down as a post-table.
A new word. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, came, have we not discussed?
Yes, sir. I asked where you're good.
Mr. Mayor, I am sort of, well, no, I'm quite appalled at the fact that we, the city of Waterloo, the most culturally diverse city in the state of Iowa, that has the problems that we have associated with our minorities and our jail population being 50% plus on an average of minorities that are housed there. And those minorities coming out or coming back into a community that is saying to them that, well, wait a minute, we want to keep postponing something that in effect is going to borrow us from employment. I guess we need to ask ourselves why the state of Iowa has, is in the 40th position as far as places where workers want to come and get a job. 40th place. It's because we've created in the state of Iowa conditions for our workers that make it a state where we don't want, that people don't want to come and look for a job. We have right-to-work laws. We have legislation that has passed that is anti-union, that took away the rights of union people, not only public employers within the state of Iowa, but in different municipalities and that. We have a minimum wage that has not increased, and then we have a legislature that comes in and imposes what I believe is unconstitutional provisions that restrict us from local control. So here we are trying to exert our authority by saying that we, as a municipality, are going to pass a provision that says that all people going into an interview are going to be treated accordingly with their qualifications, their experiences, their references, and no criminal background is allowed to be brought up until all those things are checked over. And if they meet the muster, that is when that employer can ask that question. That's all this is saying, Mr. Mayor. But yet, a community that is so mutually, that is so diverse in our makeup, we as a council are going to deny that? The 24/7 report, this Oxfam report on the worst places and best places for workers to seek jobs speaks for itself. And we, what are we doing to enhance and to build off something that we, when Reverend Robinson stood up here and talked to us about, what is the city council going to do? And we as a council said, well, we're going to do something. And now we're at the point of rejecting an ordinance or trying to say that we need to change it and dilute it even further than what it was diluted the first part of August, which I objected to, but I will go along with a compromise to get it passed. But now that compromise isn't even good enough for some people. I object to this tabling of this. I believe we need to vote and vote this ordinance, its third reading to pass. This has got to stop and we can stop it now, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, the motion to table is the conversation.
Um.
A postpone, post-table.
I support the motion to postpone. I think the wording needs to be...
I think the wording needs to be looked at so that it does not penalize employees. I don't believe you correct one wrong by creating another wrong. Here's another thing. I object to the idea that crime is isolated to minorities. It is not. This is part of the human condition from the first crime of Cain and Abel. It is people committing crimes. I also object to the notion that people with disabilities compare themselves to this rule. You did not choose your disability. But people have free will in this country, and they can choose to be law-abiding or to follow a criminal path. We are talking about those who, for whatever reason, whether it was the immaturity of youth, or what they felt was the necessity of life, or whether they were just inclined, they chose that path. So, we are talking about behavior issues here. Also, I believe it's appropriate to table this because the people that we pay money to, to advance our city and promote our city, were never brought into this discussion early on. And they're part of the group we should be talking to. We should be talking to every element, and when you cut out an element, you weaken, you weaken this proposal, and you create adversarial situations. I, I believe in banning the box. The minute Mr. Funchess said, let's take it off an application, I was on board. I said so right away. It shouldn't be on an application. Every human being should be able to apply for a job and have a potential for an interview. And, and your past should not be involved at that point. However, when it comes to the face-to-face, when it comes to you and I looking at each other and deciding whether my job suits you and you suit the job, you've got to talk about the things that you have done in your life that might affect that. We gag you. We gag you at that point. They're not allowed to ask you. I don't believe in gags. The next part of it is, I go and check your record, and I find out that there's something real serious there, and that there's a history of seriousness, and I'm afraid, I'm afraid you're not past it. The business owners should, at that point, be able to say, I can't do this at this point, not at this point. Perhaps I'll keep your application on file, and you can revisit me in a year, but at this point, I am not comfortable with it. We're preventing that. We're saying, you better have a business reason. It cannot be just the criminal record. Sometimes, that's all it is. You know, they say it's a life sentence. Well, sometimes behaviors follow you for the rest of your life. You cannot re-erase memory. If your child is murdered, are you ever going to forget the person that murdered that child? Probably not. You know, that's the price you pay for the behaviors you offer the world. Now, there isn't a single family that doesn't have the curse of crime somewhere. It has struck my extended family. I understand the challenges. I get it. I've seen it. I have seen redemption. I've seen that. But when I checked in with these family members, they said all we ever wanted was a chance to interview. It's all we ever wanted. Don't make one wrong move over to another wrong.
Right now, right now, we're talking about post-tabling or tabling right now. So, should we or not table? That's, that's what's on the floor.
I'm for tabling.
Postpone, whatever you want to call it. The motion is already there. That's the conversation, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I just looked at the calendar, and I'm not sure where the five weeks came from, but that's the 14th of October, and I will be out of town that day. So, I would respectfully ask we go to the 21st. And I don't know, I'd ask all the rest of the council to look at their calendars.
Or you can go to the 7th. Because that'll be, what's today? The 9th? One, two, three? That'll be four, so.
So, is part of this proposal that there's going to be work done on this document? And who's going to do that, and what timeframe do they need?
I think we will be gathering together a variety of people, be some council people, be the mayor, be Mr. Funchess, be attorneys. We've also, Grow Cedar Valley has asked to be a part of that. Another young man who has been engaged in, in this and has a lot of strong. We'll, we'll get a good representative group together. What I'm really hoping we can get accomplished is there's some, some details in the bill that need to be clarified so the business can better understand. For example, and this is, the ordinance says that this is, exempts employers who have less than 15 employees. Our intent, when we put that in, is it should be 15 FTEs. That's a big difference, especially for, for small businesses. There is, at one point, we exempt staffing agencies because they're truly the employer of record, and yet, they're not indeed where the applicant winds up working. So, we exempt them in one place, in another place, they're written back in, and so, it's confusing. And one of the questions I heard from a lot of the businesses are, what are the consequences? What happens? Who, where does the complaint go? If I don't, as a business, hire this employee, for good business reasons, and there are a lot of good business reasons to not hire somebody, but if they feel wrong, where do they go? The assumption is, it's going to be the Human Rights Commission, but how are they going to investigate? I can't take it to the state because the state doesn't have a comparable ordinance. So, they won't investigate it. And then, what are the results of an investigation? Is it a citation? Is it a fine? Is it negotiated settlement? What is it? And we need to look into that. So, there's a lot of details that doesn't get away from the fact that we truly, truly want to make sure that people are given a second chance. But we got to make sure there's a lot of bad information out about this ordinance, a lot of misunderstanding. We need to also take the time to correct that. And so, that five weeks, which I thought took us to September, I mean, sorry, October 14th.
Right. Mr. Schmidt is gone, then, so that's what he's saying.
Oh, the 14th is when you're gone? I thought the 21st. Okay.
So, is there a friendly amendment for the 7th?
Well, my question would be, number one, is the 7th enough time for, for you? Number one, and then number two, all the rest of the council, so everybody know their schedules.
Yeah.
Be too bad to move it to a different Monday and find out somebody else is going to be gone.
That'd be four weeks. I think it would be enough time for us to, to get him, the people together and the information. I don't know about the rest of you.
Anyone planning on being gone the 7th?
So, then I would ask for a friendly amendment to the 7th. October 7th.
Right. All right. What do we do? Has it been made?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I've changed it.
I just wanted to let everyone know that I fully support this amendment as it is written, because for me, we actually have the ability, in my mind, to be able to, if we pass this tonight, go ahead and actually make some changes later. But because what I'm hearing here basically is, is if we don't postpone this, then it's not going to pass. So, for me, I'll support that postponement for the four weeks, and I'm hoping that I will be a part of this committee that sits down and talks about this, and tries to get it right with the businesses. Because we represent the people and the businesses, and we want to make sure that everyone is happy with this ordinance. We don't want it to be something where it's going to create problems. So, I will support a four-week postponement.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Mr. Foyce.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with Mr. Amos, and I fully support the ordinance, and, you know, I can see that it, it won't pass if, if, if we don't postpone. So, one of the, one of our speakers talked about, several actually, talked about the state of Iowa taking care of this. And frankly, if I had more faith in, in our governor and our current legislature, you know, I would not have a problem with that at all. However, having been in the majority for a long time, it's clear that this isn't as big of a priority to them as it is. So, I'm asking that for, we as Waterloo City Council take the lead. We are number one on this. That we show the rest of the state what should be taking place, not allowing the state to dictate, but we should be working for our citizens here instead. So, it, this four weeks, I'm fine with. But get the people at the table, get this done, get it passed, so we can move forward, and our citizens know that we are not just looking at them in a light that we've seen over the last couple of months especially, that we can move forward with this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Is there anyone else before we, I think this, lastly, Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, what, I, I want to make sure that there's a, a understanding of what a motion to postpone does with the current third reading. Does everybody on council understand what, what will happen in these four weeks? I mean, does, do the people on the council believe that in four weeks, we're going to make changes to the current ordinance as it is up for third reading tonight? Do they believe that that's what will happen on October 2nd? Because if they believe that, then they are mistaken, because that's not what will happen on October 7th. On October 7th, we have this motion in front of us for a third reading of the current language as it exists now, and like tonight, we have to vote that up or down. Okay? So, if somebody's expecting some kind of miracle to come their way that's going to give them anything and everything that they want so that they will vote for it, because they're going to have some meeting or something that takes place with different people to change the language of this ordinance, so we'll vote in favor of it, that's not what can happen. If, we would have to fir-, we would have to first vote on any, on this third reading, for passage of this third reading. And if there's any amendments that need to be made to this, then that needs to be on the agenda on October 7th as well. So, if we, if we pass, which I hope that we pass on October 7th, what exists right now, but at the same time have on the agenda for that evening different amendments, I can see that that could work. But what happens if that group doesn't come to any kind of agreement? Have we just wasted four weeks to come to this vote?
Then you just, then we just vote October 7th. Madam, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right. So, October 7th.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.